... to order. Before we begin, I would like to welcome our delegate Carl Anerton. Thanks for joining us this evening. Appreciate it. Just some announcements. First, would you please silence any electronic devices that you have? Should you have to take a phone call, please do so outside in the foyer. If, for some reason, an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. If that exit, for some reason, is blocked, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. And if you need assistance of any kind, please let us know and we'll be glad to provide it. Okay. Is Pastor Harris? Yes, he is. Okay. Sitting right in front of me. Sorry, I apologize. Senior Pastor Benita Harris of Salisbury United Methodist Church will lead the invocation.
I want to read a brief scripture first from 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, 1 and 2. The first thing I want you to do is pray. Pray every way you know how, for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule so well that we can be quiet about our business, living simply in humble contemplation. Will you pray with me, please? Almighty God, first of all, we give thanks to you that we can even come and pray freely at a meeting like this and pray openly for your guidance. We also ask your forgiveness when we don't seek out your will in the way that we live and work, when our expectations are too small and our vision is too narrow. We give you thanks for the many blessings that our local community enjoys. And I pray tonight for each person here and their specific roles, that they will live up to the trust of all of those who have voted them to be their representatives. God, we understand that sometimes difficult decisions have to be made, and I pray that you give wisdom and guidance to each person here tonight, that through their leadership, Salisbury will be a place for all people. I also pray that Salisbury will be a place where people will want to come together in unity, to live and work and play and worship. We thank you for the service of our city council and ask that they continually seek your will in all their decisions, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harris. Appreciate it. Please rise now and join with me in the pleasurable legion of the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation tonight, and I would ask Assistant Chief Darren Scott and the other representative of the firefighter to come up and to the podium.
I'm going to be brief. I want these gentlemen to give the additional remarks. But as you may know, the Salisbury Fire Department has for years now been supporting women, supporting women through a fundraiser, an annual fundraiser. And actually, that's where these excellent T-shirts come from in years past. Did you produce T-shirts this year?
Yep.
Okay. I guess I didn't get one. I guess I don't get one every year, don't get a new one. But this is a fantastic effort in support of an organization that has touched the lives of many cancer patients and survivors and their families throughout our community. So, one, I want to thank Chief Hoppus, and I want to thank your entire team for the efforts that they have done. I'm actually not going to do the reveal. I'm going to hand that over to you all to do the reveal. Chief?
Thank you. And we're grateful to be, to come before you on such a wonderful occasion tonight to make a presentation to the women supporting women. With no fault of my own, but the success of this program is done. I'm just a willing participant. Leaders like firefighter Ben Coons and Deputy Chief Darren Scott and many others who lead this effort every year to assist in raising money, that's really where the congratulations should lie. I just happen to be the willing participant in leading this merry band of gentlemen and ladies into doing such great things. So, we ride on their coattails tonight, and we're grateful for their efforts. I'm going to let Deputy Chief Scott talk about the amount of money that will be donated, Darren.
Good evening. Like Chief Hoppus said, we've been doing this now for probably six or seven years. I don't know how much money we raised. The very first year was our very best. Of course, that's way years ago. We raised almost $4,000 the very first year. But we do sell them every year, around October. We start in September, so it's open to anybody that wants to buy one. Usually about $15. So, September, just look on our website and you'll see it on there. But really, Ben Coons is the one to design, to help design the shirt with the, what company was it?
Riverton Marketing.
Okay. So, helped design, and he did a fantastic job collecting all the money, which is not easy sometimes. The check actually says $1,300, but we found out, we found some money. So, it's, it's $1,660 this year is going to the women supporting women. And with us, I keep forgetting her name, I'm sorry, is Carrie from Women Supporting Women. I think she just got handed this about an hour ago.
I did.
So, thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely.
You want to speak?
Sure. Thank you very much. On behalf of the women supporting women, we are a local grassroots organization, so our community is very lucky to have such an organization that can assist with donating ways, donating services, having a nutrition program. We have lots that we do avail to our local cancer survivors, patients, et cetera. I was unfortunate, I had to refer a friend over the past week to the organization, but she has a resource to reach out to. So, that in itself, for a community of our size, is absolutely amazing. So, thank you very, very much. We very much appreciate it, and we'll all still also thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, without further ado, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Rudesil. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I now want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Rudesil?
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the November 7th closed session minutes, November 14th closed session minutes, and November 21st closed session minutes, November 21st work session minutes, and November 28th regular meeting minutes. Resolution number 2707 approving the reappointment of Aaron Pippen, Eric, excuse me, Eric Pippen to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2019. Resolution number 2708 approving the reappointment of Karen Lux to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2019. Resolution number 2709 approving the reappointment of Linda Weiner to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2019. And resolution number 2710 approving the reappointment of Matt Lickovich to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2019. Resolution number 2711 approving the appointment of John Rankin to the Central City District Commission for term ending December 2018. And we have three manufacturing exemption requests. The first one for Mid-Atlantic Filter LLC. Then we have Gardner Sign, Inc., and the third is Machining Technologies, Inc., otherwise known as Maytech. And that would conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. If the following people are here, please stand. Eric Pippen, Karen Lux, Linda Weiner, Matt Lickovich, and John Rankin. Thank you very much for your service and your willingness to participate in the city. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Mr. Iarton?
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Good evening. How are you, Jennifer?
Great, thank you. The first item this evening is the award of bid for contract 115-17. That's a John Deere excavator. City of Salisbury Internal Services Department received a request from the Department of Public Works to coordinate a lease purchase agreement for a John Deere excavator through Jesco International Incorporated, utilizing a contract secured by the National Joint Powers Alliance, contract number 032515-JDC. This excavator will replace the current John Deere excavator. It's a 1989 excavator, which requires frequent costly repairs and is at the end of its useful life. Per section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities such as NJPA. The National Joint Powers Alliance is a public agency serving as a municipal contracting agency for government and education agencies under the legislative authority established and granted by Minnesota Statute 123A.21. All NJPA contracts have been competitively solicited nationally, reviewed, evaluated by committee, and recommended to the NJPA Board of Directors for award in accordance with Minnesota Public Purchasing and Contracting Rules, Guidelines, and Regulations applicable to NJPA. Each solicitation is issued on behalf of NJPA and current NJPA members nationwide. The contracts awarded by the NJPA are then made available to local governments nationwide through the NJPA Cooperative Purchasing Program, of which the City of Salisbury is a longstanding member. Procurement Division has confirmed with NJPA the validity of the contract, including the terms, pricing, and expiration date, and the prices quoted by Jesco are in accordance with NJPA contract prices. Since John Deere does not sell direct, purchases are made through its dealer network, such as Jesco. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet. The procurement department requests council's approval to award contract 115-17 to Jesco Incorporated in the amount of $195,116. Upon approval, the procurement division will then coordinate the leasing arrangements per the terms of the city's master lease agreement or contract with Bank of America.
Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, we actually have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Are they in the pack?
Oh. Are they not?
Oh, there are. I apologize.
That's okay. Can we keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. All right. The next is change order number one to contract RFP 11-16. That contract is the Engineering Construction Services for Main Street Master Plan Phase Two. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Department of Public Works to process change order number one in the amount of $45,600 for the noted contract. This change order would provide for a field technician and equipment subcontracted to Ten Bears Environmental to screen soil so that any contaminated soil found can be separated and properly disposed. Additionally, funds would be appropriated to aid in the selection and coordination of a groundwater treatment system. This change order for an expanded scope of services is requested and necessary due to unforeseen circumstances of the discovery of potential ground contamination. Currently, construction has ceased due to this issue, but is expected to resume as soon as a field technician can begin work. Funds are available in the project accounts that are noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to KCI Technologies in the amount of $45,600.
I was just going to ask if we could put this on a council work session agenda. There's, the traffic has stopped, things have ceased, and if no work's going to be done, I would appreciate getting an update so that I can go grocery shopping and be able to say to people what might be going on. My only other thing was, the top of this says subcontracted to Ten Bears Environmental to screen soil so that any contaminated soil, but then further down, it says the contaminated soil has been found. Can anybody clarify that?
Yeah, with the initial excavations that we did on the section that is closed, we ran into some fuel odors, which give a good sign of contaminated soil. So, typically, what you do with those soils, you pull them out, and then you tend them, and then the VOCs will eventually work their way out. One of the issues that slowed us down is we have to now get a dewatering permit from the state and then provide remediation of that water. What to pump out the ditches is putting in the pipes and everything. So, that's where Ten Bears is coming, and they'll be doing the sampling and conformance of the permit. The delay we've got is getting that permit from MDE. We have to apply for it and get that all squared away. So, this is a process of getting it all ironed out so we can get this project going again.
One block in.
Yeah.
It's also the only block where we anticipate this contamination.
Well, I mean, we didn't anticipate the contamination in this block either.
That's not true.
Well, you're right. When you look at the map, you go, it's probably everywhere, and it was up the street with MTBE further down Main Street as well.
It was those, it was, the four service stations were on this block.
From that corner.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't a part of the, there was an assumption in the timing on it that we might find something there, and what does that do to the schedule? That's my question.
The schedule will get updated, and we'll work through our public relations with KCI on that as we get that permit. Right now, we're working on getting that MD permit quickly and getting the consultants lined up. Because in addition to what we're doing here with looking at it, the contractor, Carrato, is going to be getting a subcontractor to come in to provide the remediation equipment for the water. Basically, it's a tank that would settle out any sediments pulled out of the ditches, and then has to run through an activated carbon bank to be able to remove any volatile chemicals from the old gasoline. So, they've got to bring those contractors in and set them up.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. One more item. This is a declaration of surplus. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following vehicle surplus. It's unit number AC1. It's a 2,003 Ford F-150 King Cab. This vehicle belonged to Animal Control but was totaled in an accident. Upon declaration of surplus and is approved by the council, the city will receive insurance proceeds in the amount of $6,655 for the value of the vehicle.
Then I assume we're going to be seeing a request for the replacement of, you're not going to buy a truck for $6,000, right?
I doubt it. I don't, I don't know the, what the PD has on the radar.
It's not immediate. Okay, great. Hearing no other questions, I'll now entertain, take a vote on the motion to award the bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Now on the agenda, we are going to have a presentation of the audit.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for having me this evening. Pam Baker, Barbie Kane Thornton &amp; Company, the audit partner responsible for the overseeing of your annual audit. Just to begin by saying, we had an opportunity to come out last week when the audit report was in a draft format, or practically a final draft format, and we did walk through the audit, and we had some great conversation at your work-study group, and we also had a nice meeting with Keith and his staff to go over the results of the audit. What I'm here to do this evening is to sort of just summarize all of that for you. I don't intend to go through the audit. However, if there are any questions, if there's anything you want me to address specifically, I'll certainly be happy to do that. What we handed out to you this evening were the final copies of what we reviewed last week. You received two documents. One of them, the thick packet, is the annual audit of the City of Salisbury. The second one is the single audit report, because as the city receives and spends in excess of $750,000, passing from the federal government, sometimes through the state, sometimes directly, you're responsible to adhere to the federal single audit requirements. What I really want to point out to you this evening is, first and foremost, the auditor's opinion. So, if you want to follow in your book, it's in the very beginning on pages two through four, and I'm going to summarize that for you. Pages two through four, basically, is the summary of what we did as your independent auditors. And what that report says is that the financial statements are the responsibility of management, primarily under the direction of your Director of Internal Services, Keith Corddry. We talked about last week the fact that over the course of the last two to three years, two years especially, Keith and his team have worked very hard to build within your accounting system a method that feeds to the financial statements, a huge undertaking. The result of that is the financial statements you have before you, and also another result of that is the fact that in order to facilitate that, it means that Keith and his staff have to have all of their adjustments in. So, I can tell you as part of the audit, we did not find material misstatements or adjustments that had to be done in order to get your books and records in the proper fashion. What our responsibility is, as your auditors in receiving those financial statements, is to ensure that they're fairly presented, so that any accounting principles have been applied consistently and correctly, so that there are not material misstatements. We also have to look at the underlying controls, because just as Keith and his staff worked to put those financial statements together, we have to make sure that the checks and balances against every single transaction that goes into that system operates in a system of internal controls. And so, as a result of that, we provide you an opinion, and that's on the top of page two. And the top of page two, that opinion says that we found the financial statements that management prepared to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The city did adopt a new accounting principle this year as required under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. You'll notice, if you've been, if you've been part of this process for the past few years, it seems every year, we have yet another pronouncement that has to be implemented. It just adds another layer of work. In this instance, the new pronouncement added some additional footnote information on valuing of your investments. So, that's kind of what I wanted to summarize from the report. Included in this document is not only our opinion, but also included in this document is management's discussion and analysis. It's a narrative discussion of what the results of the last year were for the city. So, I would encourage everyone to read that. It's a great, useful tool if you want to get a sense of where the city was last year when you planned it in terms of your budget and where you ended up. As you know, the big story for the city last year was the fact that you've got huge capital projects going on, especially the wastewater treatment. It's an area that we assigned a lot of risk there because it's a lot of activity. We tested that pretty significantly this year and found that those records to be kept well and those projects to be monitored as they should be. Also included in this document are the financial statements themselves. As you know, as a city, and you may remember from prior presentations, the city presents its financial statements in two manners. One, a full accrual basis. So, if you wanted to know how the city looked as compared to a business, you could look at those financial statements. It also includes the budgetary reporting of every one of the funds of the city. This past year, some of the initiatives that were taken on by the city, in addition to capital projects, there was also a huge move to work on getting your grants management under better control. Once again, we put a lot of risk on that because there was a lot of change, a lot of work, and we found out that the results of that have been very good and very positive, and really that the city, I think, stands better than they have in the past several years of tracking every single grant that's coming into the city, making sure the dollars get spent the way they should be spent, and that the revenue promised from those grants is coming in and matching those expenditures, very important. The small report that is attached also to that large report is the single audit, as I mentioned earlier. So, the single audit is a requirement, as I pointed out, of the federal government. And so, what the federal government wants to know is that, you know, they sit at the top of that, you know, food chain, if you will, and when they pass money down, most of the time to state governments, from the state government, it goes to either a city, a town, a municipality, or in some cases, a nonprofit. Sometimes it comes to you, and then you distribute it to a nonprofit, you know, things like CDBG funds. But the federal government wants to know that those dollars, wherever they end up, that they still adhere to all of the rules that are laid out for any federal fund, okay? So, there's a whole set of guidelines called the Uniform Guidance, and it says that you have to maintain your records in a certain way. What we have to do as auditors is understand that, and then we also have to make sure that you not only keep the financial part of those funds where they need to be, but also that whatever that program is supposed to do, that you do it, okay? So, that if there are eligibility requirements, as an example, you know, you have federal funds that you spend on construction-related projects. Well, the federal government says you can't do business with someone who's been debarred or is under suspension by the federal government. That's incumbent on you to make sure of that. It's incumbent on us as your auditors to make sure that you adhere to those requirements. So, it's compliance as well as financial, which can be sort of challenging. Most of the times, you have one department who works with compliance, right? They're running a program, and then you have the financial department who's paying the bills and trying to make sure that they understand what program's doing. So, it is a pretty big task to pull that together. You came through your single audit this year with no findings, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no compliance findings. You did have a compliance finding in the past. That was resolved this year, and so your single audit, your single audit gets submitted to the federal government, as do all municipalities, governments, and nonprofits that spend in excess of $750,000. There's a repository at the federal level. Your report also will be submitted, you know, you have a requirement to report to the state. So, all things are on schedule as they should be. Your audit has been done in accordance with the timeline that was laid out. We did not encounter any delays, any delays in getting information or in being able to stick to the timeline that fortunately, we have been able to stick to for a number of years now, meeting the deadline of getting everything in. for a number of years now, meeting the deadline of getting everything in and getting it reported, getting your UFR done, getting your single audit done. And now that you've sold bonds, you know, in the market now, you'll have an additional requirement for reporting to a national repository. So we've been talking to Keith about that and he's going to be working on getting those requirements met as well. Beyond that, if you have any questions, if there's anything we talked about last week that you'd like for me to discuss, feel free to ask me now. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions?
I have one, please Pam.
Yes.
Just for the record, there is, there's no changes from the document that we saw last week at the work session and as it was presented.
Correct, that is correct.
Thank you. All right, hearing no questions, I'll now entertain a motion and a second to accept the audit.
So moved.
Mr. Irtan, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I just add that, you know, I said this in work session and I think we all repeated it. I'm sorry?
You're stealing my thunder.
I apologize. Well, can I just thank, thank my team and then? Keith and his team, you know, have worked for years now to continually, every single year, make improvements to the fiscal health of the city of Salisbury. And I think what Pam has highlighted is that progress continues. And we're on track for, I think, some exciting things in the coming future. I won't spoil the surprises, but some exciting things because of that great work. So thank you to Mr. Cordry and his entire team. Pam, thank you, for you and yours.
Thank you.
Now I will, I will say almost the same thing. Keith, you and your staff has done an excellent job. And I want to commend you and your staff on, on the job well done. Since I've been on the council, there have been, there have been steady improvements. And it's good to see and I think we're, we're in good hands, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you Pam, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much and happy holidays.
Same to you.
Same to you.
Okay, we have actually two public hearings tonight. We will have a public hearing on the Salisbury Elementary West Road annexation and annexation plan. Anyone who would like to speak or testify on either one of those, could you please stand now and be sworn in? Okay. Then we will close the open meeting and the hearing. And I will now, let's see. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2681.
So moved.
Mr. Rudisil.
Second.
Mr. Irtan. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'll call the vote.
Present it again, right?
Pardon?
Yeah, it has to be presented.
Oh, that's right. Who's going, who's going to do the presenting?
Not I.
You are.
Good evening. Resolution number 2681, a resolution of the city of Salisbury promising the annexation to the city of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as the West Salisbury School West Road Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit. Said point lying on the easterly right-of-way line of West Road at its intersection with the extended northerly right-of-way line of Queen Avenue.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number 2681, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will now, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2682. Ms. Jackson?
Seconded.
Mr. Rudisil?
Resolution number 2682, a resolution of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation plan for the city of Salisbury regarding a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as West Salisbury School West Road Annexation.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of resolution number 2682, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Glance. We now have a public hearing on solar text farm, tech, solar farm text amendment, presented by Mr. Tillman. The public hearing that we will have, anyone who wishes to testify, please stand and be sworn in?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm your testimony or back yes, the clear of the culture?
Okay, we will now open the public hearing. For ordinance number 2410, first reading. Yeah.
Just in case you have questions.
Okay.
This is ordinance number 2410, an ordinance to the city of Salisbury, Maryland, pursuant to chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in section 4.04 of Article 66b of the Annotated Code of Maryland, for the purpose of amending section 17.156.030, 17.160.030, and 17.04.120. To add solar farms and a definition of solar farms in the R5, R8, R10, R5A, R8A, and R10A residential districts. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of Title 17 of the zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review evaluation and amendments that will keep Title 17 current. Whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 zoning the Salisbury Municipal, Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Article 66b of the Maryland Annotated Code in accordance with the specific provisions of chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17 zoning. And whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas Pastor Robert C. Reinhardt Jr. of Faith Baptist Church submitted an application to amend the text of the residential districts. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the planning commission in accordance with the provisions of 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on October 20th, 2016. And whereas the planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendments to section 17.156.030, 17.160.030, and 17.04.120. Now therefore, be it enacted or ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Amend section 17.156.030. Use is permitted by special exception by adding the following item. It'll be item F and it's, will be solar farm. And amend section 17.160.030. Use is permitted by special exception by adding the following item. Item F, solar farm. And amend section 17.04.120 by adding the following item, which is the solar farm definition. Is a utility scale energy generation facility principally used to convert solar energy to electricity for the primary purpose of wholesale or retail sales of said electricity. That's it.
Okay. I'll just check one more time, anyone want to speak? All right, we will close the public hearing. And I will now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2410. Mr. Irtan? Ms. Jackson? Any questions? All right, all those in favor of ordinance number 2410, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2712.
So moved.
Mr. Rudisil?
Seconded.
Mr. Irtan? Ms. Glance?
Good evening again. Resolution number 2712, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, approving and adopting the 2017 Salisbury Bicycle Network Plan. Whereas the 2017 Salisbury Bicycle Network Plan is a guiding document for the mayor, city council, and developers of Salisbury, setting forth recommendations for prioritization and creating bike routes within the city limits. And whereas the city of Salisbury strives to promote safe cycling opportunities for persons of all ages and abilities by creating a regional bike group network, connecting citizens and visitors to destination, destinations and major activity generators. And whereas the development and implementation of the plan demonstrates the commitment of the city officials, Salisbury Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, local residents, and nonprofit organizations to embrace the bicycle-friendly community designation by continuing to establish a local and regional bike route network designed to provide an alternate mode of transportation, improve public health, and for the city to emerge into a major cyclist destination. And whereas the implementation of the recommendations contained in the plan are contingent upon future capital programming considerations for a variety of sources. And whereas the draft Salisbury Bike Network Plan was finalized through a combined effort of the community to make known preferred solutions and prioritizations thereof. And whereas the 2017 Salisbury Bike Network Plan is consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2010 City of Salisbury Comprehensive Plan. And if you have any questions, we have folks from BPAC and to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for?
Is this the Bicycle Network Plan that is, I think I remember $750,000?
It's a bicycle network plan, there's not a, there's not a price tag.
There's not a, well, what were we talking about? Was it the last meeting we had and it was like $750,000? It was, it was, something was mentioned about $750,000.
No, there's like $4.2 million worth of work proposed in the plan for, over a five-year period. $750,000? There's, there's $150,000 for the rail trail in this year. There's, there's all sorts of things. Matt?
If I, if I may address, thanks for the opportunity. Matt Drew, I'm the chair of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I think in my presentation, I did mention $750,000 as a round number for the, the portion of the projects that might be addressed through ongoing maintenance and street repaving. So the lion's share of the projects really are going to be large-scale capital projects. But the low-hanging fruit from a finance standpoint would be integrating the bike route plan in with the city's ongoing repaving policies. And those things can be done fairly inexpensively. Not, not that $750,000 is not that much money, but in the scheme of things, it, it could be done fairly easily.
Okay, it just stuck in my head and I just remembered that figure and that's why I asked the question.
And, and to add to what Matt's saying, what Mr. Drew is saying, we'll be bringing forward a piece of legislation to discuss changing the code to require that sort of work. It's obviously much more efficient. And this administration is going to adopt that sort of maintenance policy. That's just how we're going to repave. We're always going to put bike infrastructure in, in the areas where the plan says to put it in. When we repave, it's the cheapest way to do it, it's the most cost-effective way to do it. But if we put it into the code, then there's no question, it will always be done that way. And we've adopted over time, complete streets policies, which tells us that's the way we're supposed to do business. But this will actually get us into the mode of doing business that way.
Who drafted that plan up?
We do.
The actual plan. Who drafts it though?
Who drafts the legislation?
The plan, the actual plan for the, for the bikes.
So this was, the plan in front of you today is the culmination of about a year's worth of work coordinated through the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So we're the city committee that, that, that is the clearinghouse, if you will, for, for bike and pedestrian improvements within the city. Now, did we do the work ourselves? No, we had some really great consultants and we had the help of professionals like Keith Hall guide us. And we had a number of public meetings. We had great input through social media, through events like Third Friday. So, so what's in front of you today wasn't just five or six people in a closed room. It result, I, I feel like genuinely, it's the result of a lot of hard effort by a lot of different people and good amounts of public comment as well.
But that, that piece of legislation that we'll bring, you know, that'll be drafted through Mark's office or.
Okay.
And there's models out there and I think we even have a draft, don't we? That maybe Keith or Matt has prepared.
I, I have a model, yeah, that we can start with.
But we'll be, we'll be back with that in the, in the new year.
We'll get that at the work session and discuss it. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of resolution number 2712, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any, any knows? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2405 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan? Mr. Tillman?
Yes, this is ordinance number 2405, an ordinance to the city to designate a restricted parking zone on a portion of South Pinehurst Avenue between Evergreen Avenue and Mayfield. This is the second reading, would you like me to go through it line by line again, or?
No, not really.
This was, this is being done at the request of the school.
I, I know you can make it all in one breath, so. This is the second reading, so I don't think that's necessary. Any questions before we vote? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 2405, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2406 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Seconded.
Mr. Rudisil? Mr. Tillman?
All right, this, this is a similar ordinance, but instead of being at the request of the Board of Education, this one is at the request of the Heritage Development Home Owners Association to restrict parking on the street as described here. And if you want me to go through it, I will, but.
No, I think we went over it quite literally foot by foot the last time.
Yes, we did.
Any other questions?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor to approve ordinance number 2406, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2407 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan? Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is one of the, again, a second reading of 2407 regarding certain equipment and trucks for the fire department where insurance proceeds were received. And you're now putting those back in the budget after the repairs were performed. And so whereas the reimbursement of insurance proceeds to the fire department vehicles account 24035-534308 will be used to maintain the vehicles while operating within FY17 operating budget. So they need this, to take this money back in for the maintenance because they borrowed the money from there in order to make the repairs.
Any questions? All those in favor of ordinance number 2407, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2408 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Irtan, Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this again is a second reading, 2408. This was a contract with a police officer who owed the department $5,500. That money was returned. And the purpose of this ordinance is to bring that money back into the budget and increase the general fund revenue by $5,500 and increase the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 2408, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2409 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil?
No. It was Jim. We bumped heads.
Those are the two of them? You both had it.
We bumped, we bumped heads.
Okay, just, let's, let's make it Mr. Irtan and then Ms. Jackson, second. Mr. Tillman?
All right, this is a first reading, 2409, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY2017 general fund budget to accept a donation made to reimburse the purchase of summer youth employment uniforms. Whereas this, in the summer of 2016, the city established a pilot program geared at employing 10 youth ages 16 to 24 who were either in or out of school. And whereas the youth received uniforms that were paid for in whole by the city, and whereas the Greater Salisbury Committee has donated funds to reimburse the city for the summer youth work program uniforms for the amount of $756.15. And whereas the city's FY2017 budget has been amended to include an appropriation of $756.15. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be in the same hereby amended as follows with an increase in miscellaneous revenue account 01000-456911 by $756.15.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 2409, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Ms. Nichols, do we have any public comments tonight?
No.
I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of my wife, Lyndon, and I to wish you all, wish you all a very, and everybody's invited for some chocolate, to wish you all a very happy, holy, and blessed holiday. I will be on vacation starting next week. Won't tell you where, but I will not have another opportunity, I will not have another, I will not have another opportunity before Christmas to, to wish everybody. So I wish you all well. With that, this meeting is adjourned. I didn't...